This conference will now be recorded.
The time being four forty-five P. M.
You're, oh, you are on.
Yes, sir. It is on. I'll start over. The time being, it's not loud, though. The time being four forty-five P. M. I'd like to call the meeting of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. First order business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, two pieces are to approve the minutes from February sixteenth and March second.
I'd like to table March second because I have not had a chance to read them.
A motion and a second to table March second. Although, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from Thursday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second?
Motion and a second. Discussion. I believe these are, yes, Mr. Scanlon.
So I was reading through the section on the cease and desist, and I did clarify that was for all three areas and not just the one. This doesn't state that.
Is that, is that on page two of seven, John?
Yeah, two of seven, then it goes over to three of seven.
Where, where do you want that inserted? Or I'll have Gail go back and look where it says Selectman Scanlon made a motion?
Um, I do not recall exactly where, but we, I'm certain that that was clarified, that the cease and desist was for all three locations and not just for the one.
Right.
I believe it was on paragraph two on three of seven. The removal of the earth from the three sites per paragraph three point two point two. That's where I believe it was.
Does that mean we should table again until it's corrected, or do we want to amend it?
Well, I'll make a motion to amend to include paragraph two. After the, put the number three and change site to sites.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Back to the original motion. Back to the original motion. Any further discussion?
The, I, I think there was a pretty heated discussion on the, we were talking about, Keach and Nordstrom Associates for the survey work on, we can't spend taxpayer money on private property. And then there was an interjection by a selectman that wanted information on the, making a statement that I use taxpayer money to support the Northfield and Sanburton with our senior bus, and that there's no, there's nothing in here about it.
About the senior bus?
I believe that.
Remember, there was a conversation on, on, we veered off a little bit because there were, a selectman said, well, hold on a minute because we're talking about not paying for, using taxpayer dollars. What about the senior bus? Because you use the senior bus to pick up Northfield residents and you use the senior bus to pick up to Sanburton. And then I went in detail about where that money comes from.
Wasn't that at the March second one?
That was the March second one.
That would be page three of six on March second.
I didn't read it. I apologize. I didn't read March second. I already said it March second, but this doesn't, um, okay. I apologize. We'll move on.
Yeah, you are correct. It was on the March second one.
Okay, good.
Discussion took place.
And I haven't even turned a page on that one yet.
Any other discussion on February sixteen? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Minutes are approved with amendment. Next up is our D. P. W. Director, Mr. Duval, for quarterly report. Evening, Mr. Duval.
Good evening.
No, I'll switch. I'm ready. Tim, I'm, Mr. Pearson, is there an extra microphone over there? This one is a little.
Yes.
I know I have a soft voice most of the time, so. I think, I think that one's better. There we go. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Duval.
Hi there.
Take it away.
It's been a minute since I've been up here. So the winter's gone well. Obviously, this last few weeks has been challenging for the department, but we persevered and did pretty well, I think. Wanted to mention that our new hire is doing very well. He's taken on an entire plow route without any issues. He's very careful. He's methodical. And he's, his times are getting better with each storm. And I'd like to say that the other aspects of the position he's doing well with as well. Picking up things very quickly, and he's learning. So I'm very fortunate to have him on board. I wanted to mention that. The other thing I'd like to mention is the changes at the transfer station are going very well. We are now accepting single stream recycling because curbside was discontinued. We have a large dumpster for the single stream to be hauled away, but we have started initiating a separation of, of cardboard. We have a separate area for cardboard because it minimizes the volume in the dumpster. And we, we are, we do have plans to have a compactor. And as soon as that is installed and we are utilizing it, we'll have a stockpile of cardboard already to go, which we can turn around for, uh, basically cash, because we'd be able to get rid of it and cash it in. The other change that I'd like to mention is we have separated an area to start separating glass. If you've been by the D. P. W., there's a couple of concrete blocks set up that form a bin next to the old sander shed. That is going to be for glass separation. So if anybody wants to separate glass to keep our tonnage down, that's where we're going to put it. Eventually, we'll stockpile enough of it. Hopefully, NRA will give us an outlet for that as well, but if not, I do know that New London is still accepting that as, as well. From other, other towns as well. But I do know that it's important to separate it now because it does keep our tonnage down, and that's where the cost is. So eventually, we will have a, a full spectrum of signs made. Right now, it's a learning stage. I'm trying to collect a lot of data so that when I do place an order for signage, I'm doing it at once and not changing things throughout the year. I do foresee adding hours to the transfer station. I have fielded some emails and some questions about adding hours because it is difficult for some residents to get to the transfer station during the hours. We're open now. I am trying to let residents know that changes will be coming. We just need to collect more information before we start solidifying hours in making large changes like that, especially when it comes to personnel and the hours involved. Everybody seems to be on board with that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Selectman Constantino.
Uh, excuse me. When you talk about the glass and the, in the cardboard, how do you, do they need to be like in bags or anything and dumped, or is it just free flowing and then they just dump it into the dumpster? How do you bring it to the transfer station?
Right now, it's free flowing. There's, there's a, we sectioned off a, a portion of our salt shed to accommodate the cardboard.
Yeah.
So it's undercover and it doesn't have, it doesn't get wet. We're at about half capacity right now. And what, the thing with cardboard is we can squish it with our machine pretty well and maximize our storage, just in that one bay. If the glass, it can be free flowing as well because it's just going to be dumped outside. Doesn't matter if it's wet or not. And eventually, what happens is it fills up and then we crush it with our machine, fills up again, crush it with our machine, and then once we have a full bin, we'll be able to scoop it. They will load it in our dump truck and haul it to wherever it needs to be hauled to. But I don't foresee that happening a lot because glass will compact pretty well. So I'm anticipating maybe two or three chips a year. I've been paying attention to the volume of glass in the single stream, and it's not a lot. It is enough to separate out for, to keep the tonnage down, but as far as volume wise, it's not a lot. Also, those are some big changes happening at transfer station.
It's exciting.
It is. And I, I'm glad, I'm actually happy to see it going fairly smoothly, and a lot of the residents are, are adjusting very well. The vehicle fleet is, is doing well. We had a couple of hiccups with a, a plow truck only because of the little critters getting in. You know, if you're familiar with the minimum plow system, but there is a enclosed area on the plow, plowhead itself. Makes a nice little house for a mouse. But there's a lot of wires in there, a lot of electrical components. We did discover that before this past storm, which was addressed right away, and we were able to plow with that truck without any interruption. The senior center bus was, just had some maintenance done to it, some brakes in wheel bearings. Was able to expedite that repair. The speed sensors as well, and the, I don't know if you're, the lights that were on in the dashboard, they were all connected to the wheel bearings. So that was all corrected with this last repair. The morale with the group is, is very well. It is doing very good. The, the last few weeks, we're, we're testing the crew. But they, like I said, they work very well together. And they handle direction. They, um, they're, I can't say enough good things about them. They, they just, they know they have a job to do and they just do it.
I think it's from the office.
Oh, the office.
Yeah. I have reached out to R. And D. Paving to see an ETA on getting the paving project that was started last year finished this year. I'm hoping to get a timeframe from them so that I can plan accordingly. I know that we're planning to do some sidewalk work this year. I know that Winter Street sidewalk is in need of some work, so we're planning on that this year. I'm also working on my RFPs for street sweeping. The catch basin is going to pass this year because they were all done last year. So I'll anticipate doing some, not all, but some in two thousand twenty-four. And we are in, waiting for the water department to get back to us. So if, if we can come up with an agreement, if we can all settle on the agreement, I'm ready to, to go forward with that project this, this year. That'll be exciting to get that done. Academy Street, sorry, yes. So that's about it. We're, we're, we're in that in-between stage between, you know, winter ending and, and spring coming in. We'll start prepping for spring stuff here soon, once we're sure that the snow is going to stop flying, so. No?
Yeah.
I just know it is.
Wishful thinking.
We had no snow in January. We didn't think that's no it.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a mild winter, and I think we're paying for it now. It's okay.
Kevin, I, I know I appreciate you looping us in on the email to Water Have. Did you, did you let Sewer know too on the roads?
Yes.
Okay.
Sewer is aware of, of my work schedule this year.
Super.
They had actually reached out a few weeks ago.
Of course.
Mr. Jessman.
No, go ahead, Pat.
No, no, go ahead.
I forgot.
Oh.
I won't, oh, I know what it was.
Go ahead, go ahead, go.
It's not a question so much as it is a statement. I helped with the setup for the voting day on Monday, and the, the crew was above and beyond and helpful, and I never saw them lend a hand to the extent that they did. They set up the, the ropes and they had the tables set and they were putting the chairs. Where does this go? Usually, they set up the voting booths and they'll tidy up their area and whatever and kind of make their way out the door. That's the, the way they, they work because the setup is so different sometimes. But, no, they were, and the new guy seemed like a, a good fit with the rest of the crew.
It's nice to hear that feedback, yes, because everybody's good for the boss. I mean,
yeah.
But to hear that feedback from other people, it, it makes me feel better. Feel good.
Oh, John had a question.
Totally good.
John?
What's the status on Morrison Ave?
Morrison Ave, if, if, so my plan for Morrison is to get it done this year. The funds will be available after Academy Street. I, I put it on the list for John so that he knows that it's coming, that he should plan to do work if he needs to there. Schedule wise with the, the paving companies and RFPs and, and, um, I, I shouldn't say the funding is there. I mean, Academy Street is going to be a, a large portion of my budget this year. But it is a priority of mine to get that done this year. I don't anticipate it's, it's, it's going to be as expensive as the past paving projects because a lot of work has already been done there utility wise. But that is an RFP that I'm generating now to get an estimate, to see if I can work it into this year's budget.
Did a couple more breaks. I don't, have you seen this?
No, I have not seen that.
Okay, so everybody on Morrison Ave is drinking today. They had two more breaks in the last year. And I, if I was to take a bottle of water and ask everybody here, if I pour water through it or into a cup, would anybody here drink that?
Well.
So this is a health issue, and they also, depending on.
Gail can't hear you just so you know.
John, you're not on the microphone.
John, you don't have a microphone, so people in the, here you go.
Yeah, I was just asking, you know, for everybody to take a look at this because right now, it's about, you could probably maybe get your thumb through there. But there's been numerous breaks on Morrison Ave, and I mentioned that if, I don't think anybody here, if I was to pour water through it into a cup, would dare to drink this, but the residents on Morrison Ave are having to drink that. And, and it's not your thing, it's a water thing, but they're waiting for the road to just get dug up. So if, at least, I think we could, could we schedule some?
Who's responsible for those pipes?
I, um.
We need the survey first.
I understand that, but I need to choose my words carefully.
Have they been notified of that, John?
Oh, yes, they've, there's over fourteen breaks that have been patched on that street, and they're well aware of it. It's been kicked down the road, and it was mainly like the Honda thing pushed it down. It was supposed to be done after the Honda. It was supposed, and it's been kicked off because of numerous projects like that since, I think it was two thousand five or two thousand eight.
Okay.
So, um, the, you know, the, the concern is, is that the water department, they, they're waiting for the road to get opened up, and then we, we don't do that. So yes, it's the water department's problem, but the thing is, we have residents and it gets pushed down because the water department's waiting to open up the road.
One project that I did in the past, I opened up, let the utility companies come in to do their work before I would come in and pave. Some projects, I cannot do that. I cannot leave a road undone for a length of time because of either road pitch, erosion issues, things like that. I was always under the impression that if a utility needed to do work with their equipment or their material in the ground, that they would come in, do the work that they need to do, regardless of the paving schedule. The gas company and the sewer company, they do work that they need to do prior to a road being paved.
Band-aids they would, but not a major project.
So I will discuss this with John and make Morrison Ave a priority. Let him know that, um, this year Morrison Ave is a priority of mine, and that we, we would definitely work together to try to get that squared away.
Thanks, Kevin.
Eric.
Um, just two things. You also let Liberty know as well, Liberty Utilities?
Yes. Communication with Liberty Utilities is, is phenomenal. They have a, a gentleman that reaches out to me every spring and gets my work list for the year. In fact, I just sent a, a response to him and gave him the list of work being done this year so they can work properly, work on their system. I do believe that that was the dig safe markings on Prospect Street that you had mentioned earlier. Now is the time for them to do that work because the top coat hasn't been done. So what they can do is they can come in, do their work, replace the base layer. And then we, when we come in to do the wearing course of the top layer, everything is nice and uniform.
Also, they, oh, the, I forgot the, the top layer hasn't been done yet. All right. They answered both my questions at the same time. Thank you.
Pat.
Well, John and, and Eric both, the only other one was the sewer, but we, I did get a couple of questions on Morrison Avenue during the polls. You know how they come up and ask questions to speak with the selectman and of course, John was out holding a sign, but they did ask if, if it was on the docket for that, and then one, one resident said that they had gone through two water heaters in a year and a half or so, something like that.
Okay.
Because of the water. And I said, I, I understand and I, I totally understand, and I believe it is on the docket, but then when I got your, your report to, uh, your email today, I said, oh, wait a minute, maybe not.
No, Morrison Ave and Grant are both on my to-do list this year. But again, financially, I believe I can do it this year because of the cost of the Academy Street project and the paving project that I already have going. I, I know that the fund, the funds in my, in that particular line will accommodate the, the paving on Morrison. I need to send out the RFP and see the availability of the contractors and, and just keep pushing forward with those projects. I did mention to the water department that Daniel Drive, the rest of Prospect, the rest of Chestnut, West Street and Highland, High Street Extension were also a priority, just so that I can button up that section of work that I had planned. So there is a lot of work to be done this year.
Yeah.
Kevin, would it be helpful, and this stems from a conversation that we had during Budget Committee when this, when Sewer came in to us. Would it be helpful at some point in time if, if this body, this board were to have you and Water and Sewer all in at one time to just sort of see how we can make the connections? And, and what we were specifically thinking about was that budgeting going out so that, so that,
Sure.
so that Water and Sewer are looking out at your schedule, et cetera. And, and we know that you've done your due diligence with them, just.
Sure. Um, I, I have thought about that. Right now, my ten-year road plan is broken up into, I think, three or five-year increments.
Yeah.
The one thing that I have thought of changing was to make it one-year increments, very specific. These roads are getting done this year. These roads are getting done the following year, and sharing that with all of the departments. So they know going ten years in advance what my plan is for the road construction. Now, I would like for them to keep communication open and say, like, for instance, I have a six-inch water main that needs to be done on this particular road. Can we coordinate that when you plan on paving? I need that question.
Yeah.
So that I can factor that into my decisions when I'm paving. Okay, this road there, they have a six-inch water main that needs to be replaced. We need to work together. So if I need to come in and reclaim that road and leave it open for a month so they can do their work, absolutely.
Okay.
I try not to do my job with assumptions. I, you know, so information both ways would be very helpful.
Yeah. And just so you know, the receptivity from the, the member of the Sewer Commission who was there and Jen, and it was, they, they kind of liked the idea to be able to, to, to get folks together around the table and Jen just go from there. So, which, you know, and, and we specifically were aimed at money, which everyone has to think about closely. So, okay, that's good to know. Anything else from Mr. Duval?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And let's, we'll, we'll keep the snow away for a while.
Hopefully. All right. Have a good night.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good night, Kevin.
Keep it down south. Thank you, Kevin.
No, no.
Up north.
After next, after next week, we'll be, after next week, we'll be fine. So, but I, I don't want to drive through it, that's for sure.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Mr. Pyro, go right ahead.
I think a break in the.
We have a few minutes until Chief Gilman is expected here.
So there's one, two, three abatements in our to-be signs, and they have no amounts on them. Oh, they're denied. Oh, sorry, I missed that box. Holy cow, sorry. Carry on.
And we're back.
And good. There it is. So.
That happens to me all the time.
Happens as you get older.
I will, here, a, a good chance to give the reminder announcements. I'll make these a couple of times tonight. The winter parking ban is still in effect until April fifteenth, from ten P. M. to six A. M. No parking on any street vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. A reminder that town meeting will be this Saturday, March eighteenth, at Winnebago Regional High School, beginning at eight A. M. That is in the cafatorium, correct? Yes, in the cafatorium.
There you go.
I know we do have fifteen minutes. Would we like to start with the selectmen's reports? Yes.
Absolutely. I'm good with that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Pyro, you're first on the docket for selectmen's report tonight.
My only report is I had, well, I had fun at the polls somehow with Slut and Scanlon. If there weren't other candidates out there, I'm not sure. What I would have done other than build a niggling. So I have typed out my words for. Um, so I have typed out my words for this evening. That's something I've done. So I'll just jump right into it. Close enough. Yeah, I'll make sure. I don't want, I don't want Gail to yell at me my last meeting, possibly my last meeting. Um, I should, should say that now that I have requested a recount. So, um, here we are three years later. When I started my term as a selectman, everyone was so excited, they shut down the world. We learned new ways to meet and conduct the town's business through things called Zoom, GoToMeeting, Teams, Hangouts, and other online meeting places. We stumbled and fumbled our way through unprecedented times. It was not a time to be technologically challenged. Always in the back of our mind, asking ourselves if this was a legit way to do things. As we became more comfortable with our new normal, we managed to do business quite well. Then, as we reopen the world, we had discussions about how to deal with masks versus unmasked. We made it put through by putting our faith into our town department heads, who were also challenged almost hourly by different mandates being thrown at them. Together with Jeannie and Tim guiding the ship through the storm, we made it through relatively unscathed. I was recently asked what I learned in my time being a select, selectman. Sadly, my knee-jerk reaction answer was trust no one. The old saying, keep your friends close and your enemies closer. It's just a good sense. You never know what is going on behind your back. This statement hit spot on with me. There are fellow selectmen sitting at this table who, who not one time said, hey, I am unable to support you. Yet you ask on Facebook for those who didn't support you to reach out and state why they could not support you. I am asking night, now, why you felt you could not support me. Serving as a selectman has been filled with highs and lows. There were the fun times where we were able to participate in the town events, such as Old Home Day Parade and watching all the kids dressed up for trunk or treat on Main Street at Halloween. We, we opened a new police station thanks to the overwhelming approval by the taxpayers. That must be one of the ultimate accomplishments after the numerous plans and proposals that were voted down. Then there were the lows where we, as a board, made it very difficult and sucked the pride out of serving due to the fact that we didn't respect each other. Having members of the public call out the entire board for being unethical, questioning our integrity, that was one of the toughest things to have to sit through. The tension at these meetings wears ones down. More importantly, how we act is taken to heart by the town's employees. While I never spent an overwhelming amount of time in town hall, I could notice the sadness in the air when we had a meeting that was very tense. I tried to do random acts of kindness on occasion for the town hall employees. It has been mentioned at this table on numerous occasions that we want it to be the best place to work, but our habit, our behavior here at this table does not follow that model. The town of Tilton has a bright future. I hope actions of the future board does not dim the light. There is so much left to do from the Tilton Island Bridge to making downtown Tilton brighter with new and improved lighting spearheaded by the Tilton Economic Development Committee. I hope the downtown area continues to thrive and grow. There have been great ideas put out there and we can become the crown jewel of the Winnie River Corridor. The opportunities for our seniors are endless with the energy of the Executive Committee of the Tilton Senior Center. The efforts and collaboration between Tilton Island Music Series and the Tilton School keep the arts and culture alive and well. Yes, Joe, I'll even continue to volunteer if you need help. Maybe one day we can keep it going year round. I have made several variations of the statement and this is the end result. I deleted each version as some of it was out of character for me. I thank you for this opportunity to work with this board and our town department heads. Thank you for answering my questions. This part wasn't gonna happen. I've learned a lot over the last few years. I look forward to continuing to serve in different ways. But for now, I'm gonna ride off into the night. And yes, hope for no more snow this winter. Thank you. Yep.
Mr. Pyro, yeah, thank you. Um, if I, if I could, for Gail Bestick's sake, would you mind sending her a copy of that? So.
I can give it to Jeannie.
Okay. Good. Just so that she can put it right in fairly easily. Um, next in, uh, next is, um, Mr. Scanlon.
I want to thank everybody that participated in putting my name in the town report. Um, it was, uh, I'm deeply honored by it. It's never been my intention for notoriety or anything. I, I get out there and I do, I do it from day one, um, whether I'm a selectman or not, my whole life. But other things, whether it be the Indian Association, I've done that, and, um, sports, um, and Senior Center. It just, it's a really nice place to live. I, and I think everybody is family. I would thank Eric for, um, all of his input and everything over the past three years. And I'm sure that he'll still be participating in other boards and commissions as, as well needed there. That's pretty much it. We're looking forward to spring. Uh, things can start growing. We can get rid of all this mud and sand. And, uh, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Uh, Selectman Constantino.
Thank you. I too, uh, wish you the best, Eric, and wish you good luck in the recount. I have a couple of things on my notes here. I was, it was, uh, asked of me to bring forward to the board. There is, uh, this weekend is Maple Weekend. Just Maple up here.
It's the sweetest weekend of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Couldn't resist.
Is having, uh, quite a number of events on, on, uh, Saturday. And they are using the church parking lot just below on, on, uh, School Street. And they've asked if it would be possible to use the senior bus to shuttle the people up to, uh, where they are on School Street. I told them that I would ask the board because it's the board's bus.
Mr. Jessman.
How many people do they expect to attend? Have they had this in the past? Um, I'm not rapid firing question. It's, have they had this in the past? So how do they know how they're gonna need a bus?
They've had it every year and they can't use the lawn any longer because of this, number one, the snow and the really warm weather and the mud and the whole bit.
There's mud everywhere.
Right. But it, they're inundated with vehicles and the church has allowed them to park there.
So to my question, how many people do they expect? I wondered.
I didn't ask that question. It's gonna be from nine, I do know it's nine to four. I do know that. I don't think it's thousands. I think it's a couple hundred.
As I say, when I went a few years ago, those cars lined up for a half a mile up and down School Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it has been. So it, it's well attended, but I would say, I would agree with Selectman Constantino, it's probably a couple hundred. So, uh, over the course of the day, so.
So it's gonna be in and out in the course of the day. But again, it's private business asking to use a, uh, town bus.
It's a community event.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if we make it more difficult, we lose perhaps one of the, you know, things that make Tilton a good place to live. But it is a private business. It's open to the public. It's open to everybody. There's no cover charge.
I don't, don't know the answers to that. I don't think there is. I don't.
No, it's open to everybody.
When you went to it a couple of years ago, was there a charge?
Only when I want to buy a gallon of syrup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, can I make a comment?
Yes.
So just bringing up the point that you say about a private business, technically, the Tilton Island Concert Series is a private business separate from the town of Tilton. And we use the bus at that event. It's not run by the town. It's run by
That's true.
The concert series. That would be precedent for me.
Yeah, I agree.
Did you say that you had been to that in the past, Eric?
I've, I've been too.
And did they charge you cover charge for anything?
No, no charge.
No charge at all.
They, they, um, i- in a nutshell, Joe, they're showing you, obviously, they're showing you the process of, of boiling down the maple syrup, making of some of the products, et cetera. So it's just the, it's, you know, it's a rigmarole and, and they've got some very, um, young folk kid-friendly things that go on as well. Um, and, and obvious, yeah, and obviously their products are for sale, but their store is there all the time, twenty-four, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five anyways, so.
They get, they do some giveaways like sugar on snow.
Sugar on snow, yeah, that's a big thing.
Yeah.
It's a, it is a community event, uh, when I understand. If you approve it, I'm gonna need to meet with them on, like, apparently Friday night to go ahead and, uh, show them the bus, whatever.
Yes, Mr. Jessman.
For the sake of, of moving the discussion forward, I'll make a motion to allow the use of the Senior Center bus on that date and order ferry people back and forth from the parking lot to the, uh, fireman's School Street.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion.
They pay for the gas?
What's the, uh, in, insurance cover it?
I don't, I, I don't know anything about that. So I, what, what do we do for insurance? Do you know, Jeannie, what?
I would wanna check with Primex.
We ferry people back and forth from the concerts.
Yeah.
So it would seem as though this might be okay. Just, I'm just thinking out loud.
So.
We don't have a designated driver.
So i- in that instance, um, when some, I just heard somebody ask a question about gas, who pays for gas?
It would be them.
So it would be them.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're not paying for the gas, I don't think. I mean, because it comes out of the senior thing there for gas, but, um, what else do you have to think about? Gas insurance.
Who's driving?
Liability would be Roger.
Okay. I was just thinking of you driving. If it starts at nine years.
Right. It's a town meeting. I mean, if it weren't, I would probably volunteer, but I wouldn't, uh, I, I'm gonna be at my grandnephew's hockey game, I hope, in the afternoon at one thirty in Manchester.
It would seem as though if we have no driver, the issue is moot.
No, she said Ro- Roger. She said Roger.
Roger Prue.
Roger Prue.
He's a certified bus driver?
Well, he, he, he's, he would be qualified to, to drive it. He's not one of our drivers, but he would be qualified enough to drive it.
What does that mean exactly? I could drive the bus.
Yes, you could. No, um.
And I've had CDLs in the past and tractor trailers and, and, you know, eighteen, twenty-wheel vehicles. But I'm not certified to drive the bus. You know what I mean? Uh, and I'm, I'm concerned that if we don't have somebody who is, whatever it takes, uh, the, the medical card or whatever that we require of all the other drivers, that would get me that much further down the road to say, yeah. I know time is short. I know.
I, I can reach out to Primex tomorrow and ask the question.
But I, I think Joe's right. I mean, I, I have no problem with that. I mean, it, we require a medical card and that, that we go over the bus. So that going over the bus with the train, you know, going over, teaching them the bus, that would be fine.
Yeah.
That part would be sufficient. Um, you do, uh, medical card would concern me. If there's a medical card, a person with a medical card, um, able to do that, I, I would be willing to go over and spend a couple hours and go over and train and drive with them the night before and make sure that they're capable of dri- driving the bus. Um, other than that, I someone without a medical card, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that unless we had a volunteer and maybe Dave would be able to drive him. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know if he's even available Sat- Saturday morning.
Mr. Scanlon.
We have our, our chief here. Uh, would it be possible for the chief to check to make sure a valid driver's license for that? Is that allowable?
What do you mean if all he needs is a driver's license? If he has a valid, anybody can check valid license, you wouldn't.
I mean, well, not necessarily that somebody has a hard copy that it is valid. I mean, that I have seen it before, even operating golf carts that, that.
I would hope he operates a business and he has a business vehicle.
So too.
So I would hope he had, has a.
Sometimes people have licenses that get suspended for reasons that they didn't even understand, you know, a ticket or.
I think the main issue is gonna be the insurance with Primex. I think that's really where, where the crux is gonna be. So
Valid license and.
You can get back to me, I, uh, finish where the consensus is here because we need to, we start something and then discuss and then we don't know who voted on what. So, um, finish where we're going with it and then.
There's an actual motion on the floor, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll know who voted for what.
I, I, my opinion is if it checks all the boxes, then, I mean.
What are all the boxes specifically?
I, I think whatever's, whatever's gonna keep us covered is a municipality.
I think the insurance, Primex will answer the question. If they, the whole issue of medical card and coverage, they'll be able to answer that.
We require a medical card, just so you all know. We re- we require a medical card. It's not necessary from, from a municipal standpoint. It's not required, but we do as an extra insurance for us. But it's not required to run that bus through the municipality, just so you know. We do as the town of Tilton for our bus drivers, because that's what our, the sergeant trooper that started down at DOT had suggested to us. So we do it.
Can we clarify that list, what it is? I'm gonna suggest that verified valid license.
Yep. I wrote that down.
It's gonna be one.
So insurance, medical card, valid driver's license, and, um.
Pay for the gas.
Training. And they pay for the gas. So I'll, before I do anything, even speak with them, I'm gonna wait for you with Primex. Sound good? I'll finish, if you wanna keep, I'll finish later if you want.
Okay.
Chief.
Okay. Oh, got a motion on the floor.
Oh, yeah.
They call the question?
Question has been called. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Too iffy for me.
Four to one. Motion passes.
Like the idea, but being given, uh, twenty-four hours to put this together, just like, no. And, and no, just no.
We can, we can chat. Chief Gilman, with your court, with the PD quarterly report. Just know that Mr. Pearson has now moved you on camera, so.
Perfect.
Can't, you can't hide out anymore.
All right. So how much time do I have? Let's start off with that.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's funny. All right. So I just had some information. Um, since it is a quarterly board meeting, it's kind of new to me. Um, I've kind of put some things together. Uh, so some new business that's going on right now. Um, I'm looking at a chaplain program for the police department. Um, so I do have a gentleman that I've been speaking to. Uh, we are going to link up, uh, in April. He comes back from vacation. So, um, we're gonna do that. Um, the IMC mobile, so everybody kind of wants to know what's going on with that. Uh, we've done a little bit of, uh, troubleshooting with the system just to make sure if there's any questions, anything's gonna come over on. Anything's gonna come over on a midnight, that's not gonna end up with a call. So we should have those out, I would say, by next week in the cruisers, but everything else is going good. There was just a couple little hiccups. They weren't anything major, just more about some of the, some of the computers and which cars they went into, everything else with that. We have some grants. Sergeant Salmon was able to get a grant through the U.S. Deputy Sheriff's Association. They pretty much are willing to give out equipment and he was trying to get some ballistic shields, things like that, and looked for a thermal imager, which is a night vision for the patrol. Was not able to secure any of the ballistic shields, but he was able to get one Fleer Scout thermal imager, which is great. So once we get that, it can kind of show all they want back from that is really just a letter, picture with the system and how we like it. Also, we're working on a safe and active grant through Department of Dartmouth Health and Injury Prevention to receive some helmets, hopefully some bikes and lights. They open that up, so we're getting that together. I would like to start a national night out committee, since we would like to host that here in Tilton. So I'd like to get some people together, kind of, I talked to Tanger with the parking on that side. It would be in the field, but it would be a little bit more, so I kind of want to get that that ball moving and trying to see where we're going. That would be August first. It's a Tuesday, so that's when National Night Out is everywhere, so we'll shoot for that. That's our, that's our spot. Some other business that we had, the guns that you were so kindly to let us order and and we, so we we made that that order, that purchase on the holsters, the RDS system and the and the pistols themselves. We'll take delivery on those around April into May, end of April into May. We do have currently, we have an intern from Plymouth that's at our department. So he's from Plymouth State, will graduate in May. And then hopefully, I've heard, obviously, he, when he first came in, we spoke, but I don't know if he's gonna apply. I think he's going to a different state. His girlfriend lives in North Carolina. We do have another, Rich Ord, if you don't remember, last year, he did a program with Belmont Police Department, oh, actually, it was Belmont School, but it was with the the program. You remember? Yep. So we're actually going to do that again. We have a student from Wannasquam School District, but she goes to the Criminal Justice Program, the Hoyt Center or Hewitt, and we're gonna be starting that. It'll be about two week, two week program, four or five days a week, just for two weeks, so hopefully that will kind of be a yearly thing we can try to do, a little bit more. Some hosting, some training coming up. I've given you that on that weekly report. We have street crimes, lead interviewing interrogation, field training officer, crisis intervention, team training and command leadership and management. Hoping to get some more of those trainings to come in, just trying to get that hosting and then also trying to fill those shifts with our officers, and that was the problem the first time. So Police One Training, we started that up last year. It's up and running. Another year Sergeant Salmon has predetermined about two to three lessons monthly that the officers have to complete some of these classes. And the topics that the academy requires are topics that are kind of going on right now, mental health, things like that. Dispatches also included in those trainings. The filing system, we started a new numbering system the first of the year with IMC, and that's gonna help us in the in the future years and years down the road, probably when I'm gone, to be able to purge, easily purge some of those cases and some of those things out. That I'm all being together, they're gonna be kind of broke up with offenses and arrests and traffic citations, everything else, and then all smushed into one, they're gonna be in different categories, so we can purge those out as they go with the years. I've talked to Highway, once the snow melts, I do have a plan on getting the rest of the stuff out of the town hall basement for the filing and getting all the filing system at the new police department that purchased. That will be that big accordion rolling file system. It's in the bay at the police department. And we just have to move file cabinets, move everything around and get it inside that area, so be a task, but we'll we'll get it done. Supervisor meetings, we've been doing those since the first of this year, every month, and consist of myself, the two sergeants, the supervisor, communication supervisor and the prosecutor. So we've been doing those. I think starting tomorrow, we'll be doing the three sergeants or all three sergeants or two sergeants are on, including myself, on a Friday, we'll meet for an hour on a Friday, just to kind of get on the same page. That third Friday of the month, that's when we'll have the other folks with us all together, but really those hour, every Friday with the two sergeants and myself is really to get things during the week when we hadn't seen each other and try to all get on the same page, because we work different shifts to try to get everything, anything that's going on and just try to kind of fine tune that. We've learned that these last couple of months, having it monthly is a lot of gap between that, so. Department meeting, we're setting that up right now. We're gonna have the prosecutor's office hosted domestic violence strangulation. They want to do a a class or training on that for felony DV. And there'll also be a TASER recert with all the officers to get us up to our research on those, our TASERS. And then also just department business. MOU, you guys know about that, and then social media and our website. So social media, we've been trying to push out some more content and getting people more involved. It's not easy, but we're trying to get more of that. I'd like to maybe look into how far we can go, just as more informative if we have an accident or anything like that. I know some people, some departments do like DWIs. I I have a, I'm a little iffy with that just because of the rights and also I don't want to give out any too much of like the department compromising our operations in the department, so. With the website, I want to be more more information on that website if we could. So I'll get with Tim, look at maybe just putting on there some department forms that they're able to get, that haven't come to the police department. They can pre-fill those out and then bring the police department. Anything with the sexual offender registries, just some links that will help the state to try to, people have an easier way to get through. We're looking at events. I talked to Tanger and they have a food truck event that's coming, will be in May thirteenth and possibly a cornhole tournament with the food truck. They also have another event, I think that the, he said something about the Historical Society is thinking about putting on in the field. I'm not quite sure. I haven't heard anything about that. And then also Detective Murry's, we'll be doing a coffee with a cop. We don't have the exact date yet. And then we we do a career day at the school. We'll be doing that soon. And say that's it. The rest is personnel and I'll wait for whenever I can do that, so. That's it. Any questions? It's a lot of information, I know.
Mr. Jessman.
I would say that having attended the recent candidate's night at the Emergency Operations Center, it was a wonderful venue and all of your technical equipment worked, just as it should have. And everybody was very friendly and courteous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pyre.
Quick question. What vehicles are supposed to be used for details?
For detail vehicles, they are the Tauruses. So you got three B, four A. And then if the SRO vehicle, if we needed another one, that would be the next vehicle to use.
Mr. Pyre.
So I think it was last week or the week before, out on Laconia Road over near Lancaster Hill, there was a detail and they, there was a Tahoe was there. So that.
Would Laconia Road, there was a Tahoe there for?
Yeah. It was a phone company, whatever their name is, consolidated. They were running lines over to that hill up behind the Econolodge, that house up there.
If I remember so, and I can get back to you on that, I'm almost positive that was not a, it was a detail, but they called us so that we could stop the traffic during a patrol, a patrol unit had gone there on duty to stop traffic to use that, because sometimes we cannot fill a detail during the day. I'll go out, I'll look, we'll ask other departments, but if we can't fill a detail, I'm I'm gonna try to let them, at least if they have something that needs to be done, if we can go out there and help them if it's safe, and at that point, they were just going the road quickly, we weren't able to fill it. And I said that if we were in the area, we could have an officer that's on patrol or myself would just drive up, stop traffic just for that couple of minutes, get it across and go from there, but no, it shouldn't be a, it shouldn't be a Tahoe that's on any kind of detail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jessman.
And then reading over your reports, they're very well written out and far superior to anything that I I've seen in the past. I will say there are a few entries in here that make me pause and stop and wonder. On the twenty eighth of February, you you put in a report, on the very last page of that report, under building maintenance, you wrote fire protection services installed faulty sensor for the sprinkler system. Why would they install a faulty sensor for the sprinkler system?
Why would they?
Yeah.
Uh, there was something wrong with the other one. The other one was.
And they replaced it with a faulty sensor?
Well, sorry, no, they didn't, obviously they didn't, so.
They replaced the faulty sensor perhaps, but they didn't install one.
Yeah, I hope not. That wouldn't be a good thing.
Just thought I'd throw that out, bust you down just a little.
I won't let you see these notes then, because you'll probably pick out on some of these too. Sometimes I'll keep that stuff to myself.
Abe, could you tell us a little bit more about the chaplain program that you mentioned?
Yes, so when I, when I became an officer, two thousand and seven in Northfield, I remember looking at their their case. They had a glass case as you walk into the lobby. And there was a badge there that said chaplain, and I was very intrigued by what that was. I asked the, my chief at the time. And he informed me of, you know, someone would come out with help with any kind of death notifications, anything like that. And officer wellness. And back then, it probably wasn't as much officer wellness. It was really back then, it was an ear to bend and things like that. So I've always wanted something like that, and all the calls and all the things that I've I've had to go through and other officers I've seen had to go through. Sometimes we don't have anybody to talk to or reach out to, so. And also, you're asking a new officer to go and tell somebody that their loved one has passed away, or to vehicle accident, suicide, anything else like that. That's not the easiest thing for an officer to do. So I've always, I've always wanted the chaplain program to kind of help bridge that gap, be able to help us, be able to help officer wellness, be able to talk. And also serious incidents, debriefs, be able to be there for those debriefs and talk about those situations, and then just an ear to talk to, to walk through the police department, be there with events with us, be able to talk to people. So that's what I like to bring to the police department.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Jessman.
Would that also include incidents like the the one they had over in Northfield where it was a horrific scene? Those officers would also be eligible for that, or the guy in the wheelchair and the ten wheeler, twelve wheeler?
Correct, yep. Yep, those would be debriefs we would do, and I, once I open this program, I I also want to get with the other chiefs and find out, because I want it to be used. I don't want to just have it for our department, because maybe other departments that need that assistance and more to the merrier, if they, if we don't have anything going on, I don't want that chaplain to kind of be idle, let's just say. So why not try to link a couple towns and try to do it that way? And this person's well known in this area, so that wouldn't be a bad thing, so. Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon.
I believe the trial for the Northfield thing started this week or next week?
The trial for?
The incident with the family.
Yeah, yeah.
In Northfield.
Yes.
Do any officers, if they have to testify or anything, do they have support or and that? Because I I think just reliving that is going to be quite traumatic.
Traumatic, definitely.
Anybody that had to go to that scene.
Go to that. I haven't been asked. I was the third one on the scene. I know Officer Paulus, and I know the Sergeant Harris from Northfield. I'm assuming they'll be at that that trial. They haven't asked me or anybody else from our department, but they they will have those services once, once that trial starts up and anything to talk to, and our our people know that they can come to me at any time and I can get those resources with human resources, so. Yeah.
Good. Any other questions for the chief? Good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
You have any questions for us?
No questions, no.
Only fair to ask.
No, thank you. Thank you.
True, that is.
It's a great question.
You're a loaded question. You're right, chief. You're right.
So we'll be back to Selectman's reports, and Selectman Constantine, would you like to continue on?
Oh, let me get my notes again.
Sorry to blindside you with that, but.
The executive committee is meeting on March twenty seventh at fourth, four P M. I was there was a you know, poll day is, voting day is sort of like a free for all for our residents that come in and ask a lot of questions. But there were a couple of questions that came in on the Keach and Nordstrom deal that you watched the the film, and I, do you want me to hold it off until you do your report? I'll be glad to, because that's the last thing on my list is the bringing up that.
Whatever you want. I I was just asking, you had had approved.
It has to do with that. It has to do with ARPA funds and that.
Well, at the, at the last meeting, you had a, the board had approved it, so Scott just needs to sign the document. That's, so that's all I was gonna ask the board to do.
So I was asked by two people in one phone call, two people at the poll polling, that watched the the video and said, you know, we can't pay for for taxpayers' money, and then we went to ARPA money, but they were under the understanding because the ARPA money is delegated to town, to the town of Tilton, that we couldn't use that money to pay for engineering or or whatever would design on somebody else's property. So I'm I'm suggesting that before we sign it, could we get a determination on that, because I have no idea. I don't, I have no idea, honestly.
I'm happy to ask the question, but I can tell you that when they first came out with the ARPA funds, they made it very, very restrictive about what you could spend that money on, and none of the towns were participating, but because everyone was concerned that that they would, you know, they would get the money and then the federal government would say, well, you couldn't spend the money on that. They opened it wide up, and you can pretty much spend the money on anything. Having said that, I have no issue going back. I don't know how long that's gonna take to get an answer, but I'm happy to do it.
I couldn't find it anywhere in ARPA, whatever the information that you sent me, so I don't. I said I would bring it back to the board. Here I am bringing it back to the board, so it's up, if the board doesn't want, if the board wants to go ahead with it, up to the, you know, whatever you want to do.
I'd like to do the, I'd do diligence and get a definitive answer. I'm in favor of the project, but I would love to be able to use that money specifically for it. And of course, there's right of ways or a deeding or I don't know what it looks like at this point, you know.
There was one other question too, that they is the project from where the true green fence is up to Riverfront Park, or does it, is it the other side of the driveway where the dumpster is at Croppsy's property up to Riverfront Park?
It was, it was to make a contiguous sidewalk all the way from.
All the way up.
All, yeah, all the, all the way down, knowing that obviously we've, we've got the driveway there, but yeah, it was to make a contiguous sidewalk all the way down.
Well, if you watch our tape, we went round on that subject, so it was not.
Clear.
Clear.
Mr. Scanlon.
So does that include both sides of the driveway?
Yeah, it would, yeah, it would, so it's contiguous, so we're going.
We'll be on both sides.
So we would be going from that, where where the sidewalk ends at Riverfront, all the way down to connect it to.
Across the driveway and into that little patch of trees.
Across the driveway and into that little patch of trees and where it kind of.
True green acres.
Yeah, to keep, to connect it.
Kind of would make sense having a little patch, a sidewalk, a little patch open and then a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's to make that contiguous all the way up to, I'm gonna use the term, and true green trail. So the, the sidewalk alongside the Winnipesaukee. So where the, where the new fencing is and where the new lighting would be in. Um, you know, and, and, um, as, 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 as we've all looked at it, as it's been looked at, and as we've talked about, it's to just, it's to start that, you know, it's to start those, those, those little pieces of that project. When we look at economic development, it's, it's interesting to see how many of the studies show that, um, obviously pride in the town as you start to clean things up. And so many of that, I mean, we can think about so many of the comments of the, of the wonderful flower boxes we put out last year. Um, but, you know, also that continuity that you start to get. Um, and, and that you can see, you know, when, when Meredith was making continuity with their sidewalks, not to go directly to the heart of our town administrator there, but, um, you know, the, the continuity with their sidewalks, so that it, it was easily passable for people. Um, you know, what Laconia has done, um, you know, you now have Franklin, obviously, that we've all seen, um, really work on making that, you know, the, the continuity there, cleaning things up. Um, you know, I don't know if any, if everyone knows, but Franklin's going and looking to get 20 million more dollars bonded, um, to continue for their downtown and their improvements there, um, so significant projects. So, you know, um, we, I, I think we're really in a good position as a town right now, um, to, to have these small projects that, you know, hopefully will start the momentum for bigger things that, you know, that, that we won't be funding, but, you know, will create that, that public-private connection and hopefully more private connections as well, so.
That's it for me.
Okay. Um, I'm up next. I'll do the, the announcements again. Just a reminder, winter parking ban is still in effect until April 15th. From 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, no parking on any street. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. Another reminder that our town meeting, uh, will be this Saturday, March 18th, at the Wintisquon Regional High School Cafeteria, and it begins at 8:00 AM. Uh, overall, as we've all mentioned, um, and Mr. Jessman mentioned it before, um, our DPW crew continues to be just, um, you know, fantastic with the winter weather. But then again, um, as we all know, um, their work, um, setting up the polls and getting the polls set up. Um, a, a big thank you to everyone, uh, town moderator, poll workers included for, um, and obviously the voters for braving, um, the, the, the weather and the weather conditions, um, and doing just a great job, um, helping the voters get through at the polls the other day, um, as well as the town hall staff the day before, when people came in um, to cast early ballots, just so that they wouldn't get caught in the weather. Um, so multiple thanks all around. I think that we all acknowledge the fact that their work was yeoman's work and, and it greatly, greatly appreciated. Um, and one more quick thanks. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Pyra, who, uh, made his statement before. Um, but, uh, this was written down too. Um, he, he, he gave me the nudge a couple of years ago, um, you know, saying, why don't, why don't you, you know, why don't you run for select board, et cetera, et cetera? Being really very much a pest at times to me. Sometimes I wanted to block his phone number, um, just because he kept pestering and pestering me. Um, but I didn't, um, I appreciate, I, I appreciate that push, um, because it has been a, a wonderful experience. Um, so thank you, Mr. Pyra, and thank you for your guidance. And thank you for giving me that nudge to, um, to run for the board, so. Mr. Jessman.
I would start out by echoing your comments. Uh, Eric, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the last three years, and thank you for your dedication to the town. Three months, and the summer concert series will begin. I don't know what that looks like yet. Um, I'm going to reach out shortly to Titus and see what kind of involvement he is going to, uh, wanna have. And based on that, to start hustling money, quite frankly. We have a donation from the town of Tilton for the concerts. Um, the food aspects, uh, it have yielded about a thousand dollars a year over the last five years. Um, but four grand is not gonna pay the, the freight. So, uh, I, after I talk to, to Titus, I will come back and let you know what that looks like. And, uh, we'll take a look at what we need to do going forward to make sure that the Island Concert Series continues to happen. I think that's a, a great thing for the town of Tilton. That said, the, no matter what else, the bridge will not be open for the summer. And, uh, so I would like to reach out to anybody that has influence at Tilton School uh, to see if we might be able to utilize the clamshell thing, uh, up there on the hill. That was an absolutely lovely area. Uh, I don't know if it's convenient as the island or as picturesque as the island, uh, but it was an absolutely wonderful venue for the concerts. And without that, um, the concerts certainly wouldn't have been what they were.
I, I can, not to interrupt you, but I'm gonna interrupt you. I can tell you 100% that the school, it will support, um, anything in terms of the concerts, that the concerts need. That was the statement from our head of school, Kate Saunders. As things finished up and wrapped up last summer, she said, as long as, um, the concert series needs that venue, um, it's theirs to use during the summer.
Well, that's, that's one thing off the list right there.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's wonderful, and I thank, uh, Tilton School and you specifically for ramrod-ing, uh, this, this issue.
I never do such things.
And, uh, um, that's it. I think I said everything I need to say tonight.
Um, Joe, would you mind, because I, I had a conversation, um, a couple of conversations with Titus last summer. Would you mind running by him again? Because we had talked about the idea of forming a committee, and I know that we've talked about it too. Um, a committee for the Island Concert Series. So when you speak to him, if you wouldn't mind reminding him of that and seeing if he's still receptive to that? Because I think, and I think all of us agree, that would be a very, very good way to 100, 100% keep the concert series going. But then be able to take that weight off of his shoulders, because you would have a group of people working.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I would be so happy to serve on that particular committee as well.
If you can just double check with him that see, he would still be on board with that, I think, when you bring that back to us.
Absolutely.
Then we can get in the.
And we can form a plan and, and, you know, try to form a committee after that.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a vital part of summer here. Um, and I think it's a wonderful break for lots of, lots of folks, so.
Richard Willett, that used to be over at Franklin Savings Bank.
Yep.
He wants to be on that.
Outstanding.
If we do it.
Fantastic, yeah.
Just saw him a couple of weeks ago.
I, I think it'll probably be a pretty rapidly populated committee, so.
Yeah.
If we could get more people, more people to hop on other committees, like they will hop on this one.
The more bodies, the better it could be.
Well, we talked about it a couple of years ago to help out. And then last year, we talked about it, and then it never really came to fruition.
Yeah.
Oh, by the wayside, but I think this year going forward, we're gonna need that to complete this.
Yeah, I think we're at the point, and I think Titus was, was, I mean, I know he was openly receptive to the idea, so. Joe, thank you very much. Mrs. Forrester with the Town Administrator's Report.
So you received a copy of my weekly update. The, uh, action item number one, we've already discussed. Second item on the list, the moderator, um, recommends the town council be available at town meeting, and I wanted to find out what the board would like to do.
I, I don't know if we need a motion or what, but I fully support that.
I do as well.
I do, I asked her which articles, and she said both.
I'll, I'll make a motion to.
The CBA in the, at, um, bridge.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, ask the town council to be available at town meeting.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Mr. Jessman.
Who is town council?
Well, that would be John Radigan, but I have, I have already spoken with John just to see if he was available. Uh, he told me that he would not be, but he has, one of his, the other attorneys will be there because he's already committed to another community. I did, um, I did tell him, once I heard from the board, I would send the, um, business session, uh, notes, so, and highlight the ones that I thought would likely have questions.
Wait.
Uh, Jeannie, would, do we, or everyone, do we think going forward that it might be something that we would want to set for the future? Just, it's, because I've noticed it at other town meetings, um, over the last two years, as I've become a little bit more aware, that most of the time they have their, their council there.
The four years that I've been here, we have ne- never, uh, the mo- the prior moderator has asked, and the board has declined. Only one year was he available by phone, which saved the town some money in terms of travel. Uh, but that's been my experience. I don't know what the experience was before, so I would say that it should be on a year-by-year basis, because it may be of the Nella Town Meeting.
Gotcha.
You don't need.
Wouldn't that be wonderful?
Yeah. Did, did, did we not have one for the police station? Uh, or were you not here? Yes, you were here.
I was here.
You were on the committee.
It, we, he was available by phone, John Radigan.
I remember, actually, as a.
Was the, uh, I'm thinking of the attorney for the, with the, um, architect, the one, there was somebody with the, uh.
I don't recall ever having an attorney while I, I was here.
Okay.
Well.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Letter, uh, to EverSource requesting a detailed asset report for all transmission assets located in Tilton. That was in you to be signed, filed, something you sign off on every year, so I think you probably must have signed it.
Yes.
Tilt Northfield Historical Society reached out. They would like to hold, uh, a meeting at the EOC on May 13th at 10 o'clock in the morning. Um, this, to my knowledge, has been the first time an outside organization. It's usually been committees or commissions or somebody attached to the town. Uh, so this is the first time. So my question to the board is, I guess, do you want to make this space available? I would anticipate the first question would be to the chief to see if it's even available at 10 o'clock, you know, during the day on that day. Uh, but it begs the question, do you want a policy or process going forward? If other outside organizations like Rotary or, you know, I would anticipate that you'd see this coming down the, you know, pipe for.
Mr. Jessman.
In my experience, we have, um, made space available here upstairs in town hall for, uh, the TAC committee and, and stuff like that. Uh, the transportation, when they were putting the volunteer bus driver together thing, um, they were here. The planning commission has, has used our space. Uh, we now have a really nice space for these meetings and recording them and what have you. I don't know about the Rotary necessarily.
Well, I was just, uh, no one has asked me from the Rotary. I was just using that as an example.
This is our police station, though.
Right.
Yeah.
This is our police station.
Well, and I think, Joe, I think, I thought Joe.
Oh, I thought you were talking about this place. No, it was said that it could be a community meeting room. It wasn't designed as a community room. It could be used as a community room.
Well, the biggest concern I have is, it's during the day when they're.
Use it as a community.
We use it from.
It's a Saturday.
Oh.
It's a Saturday, but if it were, it's one thing if we were using it for, uh, town events, which we have used it for town events, community, like a pubic hearing or things, and that's.
The other day.
And that's what we had planned on when we had designed that room. And that's what we had said at the town meetings, that's what it was gonna be for. We weren't going to use it for private sectors. Even though Tilton, trust me, I am 100% behind Tilton Historical Society, and I would love to find them another venue on a Saturday that could use the senior center. However, uh, they're technically not a Tilton committee.
Mr. Scanlon.
So I, I believe that's their annual election time, when they have their officers, and that's why they needed space and it wasn't available at the school, which they prefer to be. Um, I think they're doing finishing touches there. I think Silver Lake Association had their hearing at the EOC on the dam project, which was, you know, a lot of Belmont people in that. And there, we have trainings in there, we open up to other law enforcements in other towns, um, for things. It is the incident that happened in Northfield. Um, I think that it's an integral part of our town. Um, many of our assets, um, of this town are being in the, being held, um, in, in their possession of, um, of our history and our assets that, um, we've collected. And I thought that is, um, it's a very connected thing to the town and its history and its, our possessions.
I couldn't agree with you more, but where do you draw the line? From a private, where do you draw the line from a private sector to? And I, I didn't know that Silver Lake used the EOC. I would never have approved that, um, for myself. I'm sorry, because that's a private entity as well.
I think that, I think that the state was actually involved in that.
There was one, the first one, they weren't present.
Who was the state?
I, I think.
It was just residents and invited people.
So keep in mind, the same with the bus that you just approved. You, we are setting a precedent by using that. And it's just, going forward, what happens if Family Resource Center wants to use the police station? It's a vital asset to our community, but just an example, they're a very large community, they're very large.
Why could they not have it here? We have all the technology.
The problem is, is that it's their annual meeting when they elect officers. And there's already, when they have it at the school, they, for that, they fill it up pretty good.
Like how many people?
I'd say maybe they'd have 30.
Oh. You could fit 30 in here.
So if I'm, if I may interject.
I don't know.
I think Pat, I think Pat's point leads to the initial question here is, is should we set a policy, process, and procedure for taking a look at and approving, or, you know, working with Abe to approve, um, you know, non-police-related activity to be able to use that? So I think that becomes question one that we need to consider first, is should we set up a policy and procedure, policy and process for taking a look at who, who could use that? Because it is a, I mean, obviously, it is a good space for people to use. Um, you know, it, in, in terms of this specific with the Tilton Historical Society, John is right, that the, the mansion is, it will not be ready on that date. Um, but there, I, I can talk to John Serrillo, that, that there's other spaces at the school that they could use. We've got a lecture hall that, that holds 92 that they could use if they needed to. And there's a number of other spaces there, if that's what they, you know, if that's what they need. Um, and again, this space would be able to hold 30, 30 plus. Senior, yeah, yeah. So Eric.
Um, just a, another thing to think about if you do open it up to outside organizations is, would there be an additional fee for cleaning? Because there's the use of paper products, uh, if you have to have another clean for the public restrooms, the lobby, if it's a snowy-ish day, uh, and you're tracking in all sorts of salt into the, into the lobby area. I mean, you gotta, you know, who cleans the floor for that? Um, so I just, just thinking of the additional cost of cleaning and making sure, you know, maybe it's a, you charge a nominal fee to cover the cost of that additional cleaning. I don't know what that would be.
Well.
And when you.
Excuse me.
John.
John.
Yeah, I, and I, if I recall, when we were selling the police station and that room in there, that we were calling it a community room where things could meet. So I think we might want to take a look and see how that was presented. That was presented to the voters that that was a community room, so.
But you need to define community. I think that there's, you know, I mean. I think that there's, you know, I mean, we open the, the Senior Center to the community, which means everybody. So you're gonna open our police station to everybody?
No.
Okay, so now-
Historical Society, I think-
That's to the point now where it goes to Jeannie's question. Do we want to create a policy or process for using it? Because if it's a community, it's every-
So I, I, to answer the question, um, he said maybe twenty, twenty people. He said he would have about six towns interested, maybe twenty people. It it will just be the governing bodies that attend because we don't want a very large group.
Eric.
May thirteenth, we have a crisis situation where the emergency operations center is needed. What do you do? And you've committed to this group and they've advertised this meeting. What do you do? Who gets priority?
That's simply answered, but again, going back to it is, that's where we need to establish what the parameters are. Cleanup parameter, I mean, just all of those things right now that if we, if anyone said yes to it, it's, it becomes a free for all in there in terms of the space, et cetera. So um, you know, it, it, we need to, this is not about the Historical Society in this case. This is about, this is about defining what the parameters of use of that space would be for the community. And of course-
For age and, and-
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So I have just one more point to, to make in it. Correct me if I'm wrong, at candidate's night, how difficult was it to hook back up equipment, audio and visual equipment that somebody disconnected? So, I mean, you know, to, to a certain point, you don't know what group knows how to do certain things and by accident could undo something that really needs to stay connected. And it took Tim quite a ordeal to put it all back together again. Thank you, Tim, by the way.
Eric.
Um, great point to bring up, Pat. But along that line, it's in, if it becomes a regular thing and so that Tim isn't tied up to do that, you have someone trained or something that you would have, they would have to be paid. Or volunteer if they would, but to, 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 to make sure to go in for that event and make sure that the equipment is the right way, if there's any, in this way, if there's any technology issues, they're right on, you know, they're right there and you're not knocking on the dispatcher window. You know, can you come help us or something like that? So um, that's just my two cents.
They weren't looking for any technology for this. It was just a roundtable.
I'm just talking gen- general policy procedures. I'm not specifically talking about the Historical Society. I would hands down say yes to the Source Society, but if we're looking at a policy and procedure in general, setting a precedent on what, who and what, where we would allow people to use the EOC, which is, I think, what we're talking about is, then we have to be very specific about that. Now, if you just want to talk about the, the uh uh Historical Society, that's fine. I'll go with whatever the board wants to go on. I, it's, Historical Society is very near and dear to me. I would grant them, but I, again, as a selectman, we have to be very careful about setting a precedent.
Are we in agreement that we need to set policy and procedure in terms of use of that space? So.
Yes.
I hear, I, Pat's a yes, I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Eric's a yes.
I'm a yes. I'm not ruling out that we would allow them.
No, that's not, that's not, I'm just talking about just the policy and procedure on that, not, not a. Mr., Mr. Pearson.
I just had uh one comment uh is that listening to the meeting, it seems as though the discussion you're having on the asset of the room is uh very similar to the asset of the bus since the selectmen control it. So if you're developing a policy and, and procedures for the use of the room, I would say the same thing would hold for the bus because otherwise, if, you know, you have one organization using it, it's a commercial organization, then I would think, you know, it stands to reason someone else could come in and ask. Uh, so if you're developing one, it might be good to-
That's a very good point.
Make one for the bus.
Good point. Mr. Jessman.
I like the Historical Society, but I would vote no. Um, I think that the EOC should be for town, state and federal, of course, if you had an emergency, uh, go in there. And I agree that it could be the Rotary, it could be the Boy Scouts, it could be the Girl Scouts or 4H or any very valuable uh community organizations. That's not what that building is set up for. And for things like we did the other night. Um, I think that's a wonderful thing. Um, the Senior Center, when available, yeah, would, would be a host to those things. Is that correct?
We had, they've met up there uh once or twice that I can remember, yeah.
And you can hold upwards of thirty-five or forty people.
Sixty-five.
There you go. Um, well in, in uh excess of what they're expecting. We have a uh now, we don't have a policy specifically, but we probably should, that says that we can point to uh that this, this room is for uh town and uh state functions as available.
Well, actually, it's, it's actually in the deed for this building that when-
I can do.
It's actually in the deed of this building that when this building was given over by Charles Tilton to the town that they had to allow uh it to be used for community functions.
So when we refuse the KKK to come in, we're wrong?
Well, you could, I mean, I don't know who read the town hall assessment, but it was, it was in that document.
Yeah.
This was the rec center up here, it was a playhouse.
Yeah. So, so, so Joe, just to narrow down, y- you're a yes on establishing policy and procedure for that space? Not, we're not talking about Historical Society.
No, I'm yes to the policy and procedures. We should have-
Five, yes. Yeah. Yeah, a- and obviously like if we're going to have people use it, that we talked about the cleanup, the use of technology, et cetera, et cetera. Because that covers us and them, so, okay.
Oh, have you answered the question? Because John's asking the question.
On the, the Historical Society question?
He's asking if he can use the EOC for his meeting. He did say he's looking at other places, but he just wanted to see if that was an option.
I, I would be fine after we've established policy and procedure for the space.
Okay.
Can you go see if you can find another spot for him?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he, I'll get-
I think he just needs to find a spot.
I'll get in touch with him too. So he and I were talking just this morning. So I'll get in touch with him and let him know that there are other spaces at the school. We don't have Saturday classes anymore, so there's space up there.
Next item on my list is a letter of credit for the Preserve at Winesquam. Uh, there was, I think I put a la- uh copy of the letter of credit in each of your packets. I believe I emailed that as well. The letter's been reviewed by our attorney. And uh Leanne asked that the board make a motion, accept the letter of credit.
Yes, Pat.
Can you please explain to me what a letter of credit is?
Well, I, I, it is much like, I mean, you've seen these documents before on the project that was up the, up School Street. I can't remember the, you know, the housing up there. So you hold back this money to make sure that um, that everything they need to do before the project is closed up is done. And if it's not, the money gets held back.
So we're giving them back, if I'm reading this correctly, this is part of their bond, correct?
Well, it's a li- it's a letter of credit that will be, uh, my understanding is be, will be put in a, an account and will be held there. And they need to, as it's laid out in the attached, attachment in the back, they need to fulfill all these obligations. And if you remember, this is again, up the road, this was done as each piece was done. They would come back and say, this part's been done in our, our engineering firm.
Establishing the-
Yes.
This is, okay, got it.
This is established.
Establish it. It's not taking it away.
No.
All right, I knew the bond. It says restoration bond and I'm, I'm thinking um something different. Okay. Is it, was different in the letter than using the word restoration bond?
I'll ma- I'll make a motion to accept the letter of credit for uh the Preserve at Winesquam.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I'm not sure I understand it.
So.
Well, if I can ask a couple of questions, so typically we, we have a bond that we keep and then we refund them to it. Um, so is that what this is?
It's setting it up.
Yeah.
Is it exactly, so we hold the money?
Right.
We will be holding the money?
We're the beneficiary.
As we can bill them for it.
Well, what happens is it gets put aside in an account. And Tim, if you want to weigh in on it, um, my understanding from i- is that it's put aside in an account. And as it get close to the end of the project, our engineering company, Keesh Nordstrom, will go out there. I think it's Keesh Nordstrom. They go out and they make sure that these things have been done be- because they will come back at, at towards the end and say, we want this money back. We'd like to get this money back because we've done this. And Keesh Nordstrom will go out, look at it and see if it's done and they'll, they'll come back and they'll say, yes, it's been done. And then it's, it's released as it's fulfilled.
Correct. Yeah, we, we don't hold the money ourselves.
Right.
It's in the bank.
So it's a, the standard bond that we, we put in there and it's not released until we say so. That's right.
Right.
Yeah, you have to sign off on it. Yep. I'm good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
So the next item is the narrative for the business session. Tim and I worked on putting this together for the board. It gives you talking points. It lays out who's going to make the motion. It leaves open who's going to make the second, uh, because that's the way this board's liked to have done it in the past. They just, it's kind of organic at the day of the meeting. So I don't know if anyone has a chance to look at these, if there's any changes, any questions? If you need to make any changes, um.
Was that online?
I sent it via email.
I didn't see it at all.
It was attached to my report. And then there's a hard copy in your file.
In here?
Yep.
Yeah.
In the front binder.
Front, it's in the front.
In the fold.
I'm sorry, Jeannie, I didn't really have much time this week at all to look at anything. Although we had a lot of time Tuesday.
I don't, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, so if you want to take it home and look at it and if you've got any questions or any changes or additions before Saturday, I can make them on Friday and uh bring them on Saturday or send them out to you.
Okay, we can each look at our own.
Right.
Yep.
The, do you mind, um, I, I was gonna ask this question to Kevin too, or, or Tim maybe. Getting the total amount expended, because I know just the pots on this recent bus uh
Good, I think.
work that he did was um
No.
You said the three thousand was spent on replacement water and heater and electric, but we don't have the, he spent twelve hundred dollars just on the pots for the bus the last couple of weeks.
We don't have that yet. We don't have the expenditures for that yet. But we, you know, I can find out from him and we can make a note of it.
Because that would go to the expendable trust, another uh point. Do we know how much to date that we've spent on the bus for repairs?
Nothing out of the expendable trust, so.
Oh, it's all been out of the?
If it was, if there were, there wasn't anything major to my knowledge um that I saw. And uh nothing was, was coded to um go out of anything other than the Senior Center maintenance line, which is the, also for the bus.
Okay, so would, uh, if it was just twelve hundred dollars for the pots, then it would be considered a major?
I would think so.
Come out of the, the expendable trust.
As long as the board um voted to do so and um made that request of the trustees, yeah.
All right, so we still can mention it. We can still mention it then?
Sure.
Okay.
Jeannie, just for clarification sake, for fourteen and fifteen that I'm presenting. So all veterans tax credit, that we're just, we're just asking for approval so that we can continue to give the five hundred dollar all veterans tax credit.
A couple of things.
Yeah.
One is that um with current legislation, what it did was opened it up to anyone who's serving.
Yeah.
So that if the body does not vote for this, what will happen is it will revert back to the fifty dollars.
Okay, okay. So, but the, the, the fifteen, a fifteen is, i- i- if I'm, just correct me if I'm wrong, it's re-adoption of optional veterans tax credit. Hey, um, that goes to honorably discharged veterans, but it also now is, the legislation also includes um veterans who are currently serving as well, which would be the change.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the change and, and um, um, if they vote against that, everything goes back.
Okay.
So what they've done is they've expanded it to people who are currently serving. It used to be just honorably discharged, people who have already served, but now they've opened it up to people who are currently serving.
Okay.
And it is, we had this question at our town meeting last night. Somebody stand up and say, is this, does this apply to dishonorably discharged people? No, it's just honorable.
Honorably discharged, okay, okay. Got it. Okay, thank you.
So should I move on or?
Yep.
Uh, so you, I'm through with my action items. You'll see my FYI. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I do know we have um someone in the audience who um has some is here to talk, to ask, I think, about the first FYI.
I had a question on the first FYI. The option of granting the four parking spaces, is that still on the table?
No, um, I, she called and said that um they have decided just to take the parking back. And Leanne was very helpful uh with me today. Uh, we sat down and looked at exactly what we're talking about. And currently, they get, the town reimburses them for the taxes and that, that amount is for the two lots, it's uh one thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. And we're talking about thirty-seven parking spaces. Right now, the town does the plowing, the town does the striping, maintains it, so all that goes away. Looking back through the file, it appeared back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, when, when it had to do with the, it was before me, when it had to do with the wall. Looking back through the file, it appeared back in 2018 or 2019, when it had to do with, it was before me, when it had to do with the wall being damaged. They had at that time, said they were going to end the agreement and they wanted their, apparently there were no parking signs on those spaces that they had that the town moved. And they wanted those spaces, or they wanted those parking signs put, those no parking signs put back up. I'm imagining that those are not available anymore. And back at that time, they also said they would start towing people who parked there, so. And their agreement, their current agreement ends March 31st.
Okay, so we need to notify the fire department?
Well, the fire department has their own parking, they have.
They only have two spaces?
They have eight spaces behind their building.
Oh, behind their building, yes, but they're parking currently on the side of the building. So we need to notify them that they can't park on the side.
The town has 26 spaces on one side of the fire department and 23 on the other side. And after the 26, there's an additional 37, which.
Part of that 37, we ded, we dedicated six of the 37 to the fire department.
Okay.
And six of that 37 was strictly for fire department and they put signs up.
Yep.
So that's six of the 37 is what I'm talking about. And we, and unfortunately, we can't possibly, if we're losing 37 spaces, can't possibly designate six on the other side because the ideal hall uses that spaces for parking. And our businesses consumers that frequent the businesses downtown.
Joanna.
I'm here representing my mom, she owns the building that's beside T-Hop. There are five apartments in that building. Losing that lot, I would like to know where I can tell my tenants that they can park. They live there. They have vehicles, we're losing a great amount of parking. They are going to call me and ask me where they can park overnight. They have purchased parking stickers from the PD three months ago. Now they're gonna not have any parking. It's, I understand that there are parking issues in Tilton, but I'm going to lose tenants over this. The town just approved across the street apartments above these. That's going to be more cars. You're, you're going to end up with the downtown where the people that live here are not going to have vehicles. They're not going to have jobs. I, I want to know what I can tell the tenants, because my phone is the one that's going to ring.
Pat.
I think for now, knowing the situation in, in expedited way, we can use the old post office family resource. That, that is a municipal parking area and that we can designate it overnight parking for now. And I'm, I'm sure that the board probably can, I mean, it's a general parking area for you to go across, your tenants to just go down there. The parking, the apartments upstairs with, we, they, when, planning board just approved is the owner of that parking lot, so they won't have a problem parking there. But, but to your point, Joanna, I think that if the board sees fit, that we could approve, because a lot of people don't realize that that's municipal parking. But we just designated it as overnight parking, there's, I think, 11 spaces there.
One handicap. 37 that we're losing.
Well, how many tenants do you have, I mean?
Well, there's five apartments in there and if, if most people have.
Two.
Two cars, so that's 10.
Right, so I think that they would be, be able to least fit over there for now. Overnight.
I, I just, I have serious concerns going forward. Back in the day, there used to be parking over at the old bank building. That got taken away, it's private, that's great. I understand that the lots are private. However, it's going to change the dynamics of downtown. You're going to lose people that have jobs and pay rent to people who don't have vehicles, because that's the only people that are going to be here. So I would implore the board to try to come up to some sort of solution, because it, it's a scary thought. It's a scary thought, I'm going to have people that move out of the building because they can't maintain their jobs if they can't have a place to park their vehicle at night. So I, I would implore the board to come up with a creative solution, because it's going to impact a whole lot more than just my tenants down here. It really is.
Joe.
The loss of 37, we tried to negotiate, we wanted to negotiate. We were totally willing to negotiate and they have advised us that they will not be renewing the agreement. We can't create more land down there. That's, that's unfortunate. I would be in favor of the municipal parking over by the, the, the center. But that 37 spaces is going to be devastating and I'm not sure what we can do for that in the long term. I just don't know yet. We want to take care of your tenants, we want to take care of everybody that works down there and the businesses. And we didn't have enough parking spaces to start with.
I realize that.
And losing 37 of them is going to be a harsh reality.
So I can tell my tenants, it's just the reality, sorry?
What do, what do you want me to tell them, that they can park in the middle of the air? There's no place to go. We are willing to give them the spaces over by the, the center, which take care of the people in your building, but not necessarily anybody else that lives down there. So we've got those problems coming up. We'll address yours first, because you were first at the podium, but I, I don't know. Losing 37 parking spaces is a terrible thing for the town of Tilt.
Absolutely.
There is no other place. So I don't know what the answer is in the long term, but we'll be doing our best to come up with something. We have to.
I, I hope something is, is, I hope there's a solution somewhere, because I know that my phone is going to ring.
And I. You and me both, I'm not sure what it is as we discuss it right now, though.
John.
So I, if I recall, there's a right of way, or it was actually a road that went over or through that parking lot and over to Academy Street that went over the railroad tracks and we just, maintaining it, we, in the tracks and safety, we decide to block it off. Is that right of way still ours? How is that written? That could provide us with some spots there. I mean, that's, that's a start.
With the big tree is? Where the big tree is?
Yeah, that's.
There is some green space over there.
So, yeah, so you know where the railroad crossing was there?
Yeah.
So possibly that, the other thing is where Academy Street's one way. Possibly we could put some parking spaces on there of some type. It's, it's only going to be.
Where?
Touch and go, well, Academy Street, if it ends up being one way.
Once it gets opened back up again?
We might be able to provide some spots there. So we've got to start getting some creative stuff going on here. And I don't know if the owner of that property would be willing to do something individually with the building owners that that possibly could do that. But I think right now we're going to see what, where it's at. What, what's the issues and see if we can resolve those. Right away. I'm getting right on that. We've run into this before in previous years and we've resolved it. Not apartment thing, unless of course the fire station comes down, that gives us some spot.
Not coming down anytime soon.
Mr. Pyer.
Just a couple, a couple of things. If I recall correctly, the, the, the negotiation was for a certain amount of time that they wanted and we wanted a different. Are they willing to go back to that shorter amount of time? Or is that off, out of the?
It appeared to be off the table now.
Okay. And then my, my second thing is, I guess we're going to, I'm not trying to pass off, but these are thoughts that have come to my head. We're going to have to make sure that the downtown Main Street parking rules are enforced with the two hour limits and things like that. Because I've seen cars parked out there for hours, all day. And, you know, if, you know, we want, if this is going to, this is going to affect our downtown businesses, our residents downtown. And we need to make sure, and dare I say, at least maybe temporarily in the summer, we allow overnight parking on Main Street, I don't know.
We haven't allowed the midnight, the overnight parking in the municipal parking lot yet on the, on the town where the town, where the town parks. I mean, that opens it up as well. We haven't allowed overnight parking next to the fire station. We've only allowed it against the wall, we're going to have to open up it, you know, like a deadline or some, a timeframe like, you know, 10:00 PM to something or 9:00 PM to something. At that point, I mean, that's overnight, you can, you know, make a timeframe on that. And then you've got the 26 spaces next on the opposite side of the fire station that you can have for overnight, because you're losing 10 overnights on the other side. Where Johanna is speaking, the rest are during the day, six of it which were not spoken for because they were fire. So you're looking to make up those 10 overnights on the other side for tenants across the way where T-Hop has tenants, Johanna has tenants above in that area. There's your, in that 26, there's your 10, 10 there, open that up to, to overnight at, at a certain hour. Until we can figure it out. Plus you have the municipal parking space over by the Family Resource Center. Now you're up to about 36.
Do we, do we own the land from the parking spot that you're talking about on Family Resource Center up to the tree that's lighted? Do you know, is, is that our?
Best I know, yes, we do.
Okay, just, yeah.
That's the, that's the right of way John was speaking of.
Yeah, because I'm just, I'm just looking at the.
Might be to get some spots in there if we have that.
But we only own the parking lot that's closest to the, to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I was going to say that it butts the railroad tracks, right? But.
We also own the T-Hop parking space.
Yeah, and, and the ones.
We call it T-Hop parking lot, but it's not. Just happens to be beside the T-Hop.
And the, and the spaces down into the dirt too, that'd go up to the, yeah.
There's a couple of spaces in the dirt, not all of them.
So am I correct in the understanding that what this board is, is saying to Johanna is that her tenants, after March 31st can park in the Family Resource Center? Until we figure out.
I think that, I think what we need to do is just make a motion that for now, temporarily, that we'll open that particular parking lot, I think it's, is it D?
I, I feel like it is.
I feel like, well, we could say next to the Family Resource Center for overnight parking and open up the next.
Until further notice, right? Yeah.
We, you know, till further, temporarily until we can figure it out. That.
I appreciate anything the board can do, because I just, I'm not here to cause trouble, I don't have any solutions. I just, I'm seriously concerned, I mean, I'm worried, not just for my building, for all of downtown.
No.
I'm not the only one in this position.
You're right.
It's, it's, it's 100% valid question.
The microphone, because I'm hard of hearing and I can't hear you, Joanna. Thank you.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so.
Alright, thank you.
Good work, thanks, Joanna.
We're good with that one and we'll be working on, we should get an inventory of every available spot and make a plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joanna.
I'll make a motion to, as of, what do we say, April 1?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion as of April 1 that the municipal parking spaces next to the Family Resource Center, allow overnight parking until further notice.
Second.
Lot A, by the way.
Lot A.
A, okay.
That's what, on Google Maps, that's what the Google machine is working for me today.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Yes, Mr. Pyer.
I'd like to make a recommendation, as of April 1, we remove the variable sign to another location as that is going to be taking up a valuable parking space. Or spaces.
Not to use it there anymore.
Not to use it in that, in its current location, we, and we need to find a better.
Along the river, you mean?
Yeah, it's across from the T-Toll gas station. There, it's taking up one or two spaces and, well, every space is going to count right now.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm second. Motion and a second about moving the notification sign. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. I, I just, I have to think about it.
Motion passes.
Think if we lift it for the day and then took it down, it would be fine, but.
I think we can figure something else out.
Are we going to talk about this further to, about the negotiation, but?
About the what?
Well, she, she had, Sleckman had a meeting on Thursday night. I called her on Friday, she was accepted the one year and the six parking stickers. She said yes. By the following Wednesday or Thursday, she called me back and said, no. She and her husband had talked about it and they wanted to stop the lease.
No explanation? We could talk about it non-public, if it needs to be in non-public.
No, it doesn't need to be. I, I, I don't, I don't think, I didn't. Wasn't a long discussion. You know, they're trying to build the apartments and the fire department is requiring the building to be sprinkled, which is going to be quite expensive. And they felt that they needed to find funds somewhere to pay for that expense.
Can we offer to purchase it?
Purchase what?
The parking lot.
Would they sell it?
I, I haven't asked that question because the board didn't ask me to ask that question, so.
I don't know, even know how much, it must be appraised at something, but I don't know how much that is.
Mr. Pearson is at the, Mr. Pearson's at the podium.
Yeah, returned to the podium, I, I was just going to say, just a few minutes ago, that back in 2008, there was an Warren article to buy the Northway Bank parking lot for $55,000. But we don't own it, so, but that was back then.
Maybe they'll sell that lot.
Got it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
If that's what the board wants me to do, I'm happy to go back and.
Yeah, I think at this point, we need to reach out to any, and all.
See if we could with, with the caveat of a space for them.
Gonna have to be more than one space.
The amount of spaces that they needed.
Dedicated spots for them, right? So it.
Six. No more, no less.
Let's see what their proposal is.
They wanted six. That's why I said that.
And would we want to approach purchasing the lot that's fenced in?
I've had that conversation every year since I've been here, and I don't know what happened, but.
In nine years prior to that, I've had, every single year, I've had that conversation, and in every, it's a joke now, because I say, how about it? And he'll say, I'll deliver you some cannolis first before I do that, and I've never seen the cannolis, but.
Something happened between him and the town, and I.
It was emptied, complete hole. It was a foundation, an empty hole. And we filled it in for him with the understanding that it was going to be used, that he was going to open it to a parking space.
It was a verbal deal, and nothing was signed.
And nothing was signed.
John.
So it's, it's the same issue there, that he is very upset that he cannot rent his upstairs apartments, and because the fire department's requesting him to go and put in the sprinkler, so therefore, he's not gonna allow anybody. I think that was a big part of it.
It was at the same year that, that he was supposed to fill in that, not fill in the hole, grade it so that he could have parking there, but the, in order for him to sprinkle the apartment upstairs, Jeannie, he has to bring water across Main Street at hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it was a done deal, and that's why he was, he doesn't want to do it now.
Something for the board to chew on. I was just looking at the map of the, that, that space next to Community the community center there. And I wonder how many spots we could possibly add if we went down and closer to, I'm gonna use the term the Christmas tree toward the water.
Yeah, if we find out where we own.
Correct, exactly. If we find out where we own on.
And then we'll, does it show that little driveway?
Yeah, well, it's the driveway right behind where the water, the water department is, so this.
Actually, our right-of-way, too.
This, this section of land, I wonder how much of it we own, so. It would be interesting to see, and if there's space there to add some spots, so.
Okay.
Just, just as something to chew on and take a look at. Okay. That was.
For town meeting, are you going to want your binders for town meeting, or? That's your.
No, I don't.
No, thank you.
I don't need them.
I need no.
I also wanted to let you know that I had spoken with Johanna about, if you recall, I had talked to the board about our efforts to clean up the basement. And I had a conversation with Johanna, and in the last, since the last board meeting, I told her the next day, she has been working tirelessly to clean up. So there's, I'm telling you that there's no reason to send a letter from the board, because she's taking care of it pretty much.
Awesome. Thank you, Johanna.
That's great.
That's fantastic.
And I think that's it, unless anyone has any other questions for me.
No, all set. Okay. The time being, six fifty-nine PM, I make a motion to enter into non-public session per RSA ninety-one A three-two A. Dismissal from motion or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected one has a right to a public meeting, and two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. And RSA ninety-one A three-two C. Matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance or tax abatement, or waiver of a fee, fine, or other leaving, if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, vote.
Constantino, yes.
Jessamyn, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Pyra, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
We are now in non-public session.
This conference will now be recorded.
It's almost my turn.
I make a motion to seal the minutes of the March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, non-public session, because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of this board. Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Is there any new business? Mr. Scanlon.
So at one point, I was down in the basement a couple of months ago, I forgot about, and I was at the historical society meeting. There's a sign down there, an old pharmacy sign or something, and I mentioned it, and they asked if they could.
It's really cool.
Yeah, they could, or anything else like that that's found down there in the cleaning of the basement. If they could do their standard procedure for taking possession of the sign. Could be filling that mansion up pretty quick, I think, Scott.
Yeah.
It hangs up from Hilton Pharmacy. It's in some of the pictures.
That's really, that's cool.
Well, we allow them to
Handle it.
Be the keepers of any of those signs or similar items that are found in the basement and inventory it like they all have been doing.
I'd love to get that cleaned out of there.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm, I'm fine with it, absolutely. Yeah. Eric, good with that?
I think Joe had one other thing. I didn't have anything else.
I do. I have one thing.
Select my constantino.
I, I forgot to mention it in, in my report. The executive committee met in, last, in March, a couple of weeks ago. The, the tapestry that hangs from the main hall in the senior, we've been trying to get grants, or somebody to do a grant, but we need the space. We are quickly outgrowing our senior center. And we don't want to put anything up there at all, because as soon as anybody touches it, it's flaking off, and we, it's a danger. So we either want to ask the board to take it down and store it someplace, but I don't know how to store it. I have no no idea how to store such a thing, if it's even possible. It's quite old, and it's signed by the original person that painted it. But we were thinking of perhaps putting some tables, putting some railings on the steps going up to the stage, and clearing that stage area, and putting a couple of tables there, which would expand our space a little bit. So no, at the senior center. Yeah.
Jeannie.
All week.
Jeannie's thinking about throwing more stuff.
The tapestry would look nicer. No, I'm just kidding. But, so I don't got any ideas, because I'm open to them.
Have you reached out to John Cirillo? Because he, I, I think he would probably have a few people that he could connect with who could come take a look at it.
If anybody would.
Yeah, it's John would, John would definitely be able to have a few resources to be able to take.
He might be able to find a home for it.
For it not to reach the ground, the floor of the staging, it's rolled up at the top.
Yeah.
Quite a bit.
Interesting.
I've looked at that thing, and I checked it out. It's crumbly.
At the bottom. There's a good part, portion of it at the top that's really good.
My, my guess is, is that he would have a resource or know someone who had, would have a resource in terms of a preservationist.
All right, is the board okay if I, if John has a place for it, and we can put it, store it, or they can put it somewhere that, or apply for a grant for it, or whatever?
I'd be willing to listen to the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, okay, John, go ahead and store it.
Or perhaps maybe Kevin can build a, like a knee wall in front of it, so that nothing can touch it.
A Plexiglas thing, or, you know, I don't know what, but.
Something that the music equipment or a table won't knock up against it.
Well, let's start the process.
A few years ago, I think Kathy Mitchell did the research for it, but that map that's.
The map, yeah.
Downstairs to be.
From the Moose Grant.
Got a grant from the Moose Grant to go and preserve that whole map.
Well, Jane years ago had checked with the.
That might be another.
Another, here's another resource.
Jane years ago had checked with the Moose Grant, but, and then preservation, I, I don't want to quote this, because I know I'm gonna get it wrong. Some preservation, historic preservation in Concord. But they required that the seniors worked on it, and that we closed the senior center for a week, and that it would be on the floor, and they would be working on it. We can't close the senior center for a week, and we don't have seniors that are capable of working on it.
I don't have, roll out any options.
Right. Yeah.
And, you know, on the other side of that wall, if it could be preserved, it might be able to hang on the inside of that wall. Is that a good environment for it?
Be ashamed to hide it away like that, but I don't know about folding it up either, you know, or rolling it, or any of that stuff.
It's rolled right now.
It's gotta be looked at first, I think, in terms of looking at what we can preserve and how you can best preserve it.
It's probably a fifteen, twenty feet wide, fifteen feet wide, and it's probably, we would go to the ceiling. It used to be the curtain for the stage.
So it's that big, anyway?
It's at least.
It wouldn't fit in there. I'll bet you it wouldn't fit in there.
It would, it would fit in this area in between the windows, yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
You think so?
I bet it wouldn't. But we can get John on the job and see what he says.
I think it would, and I bet it would go almost all the way up to the ceiling on that.
Could also go.
Over there.
If it's too wide for this space, that's.
Oh, to the stairs?
Yeah. Just a little thought. Let's, let's.
Need some professional input.
Yep.
Let's see what we gotta do to preserve it.
I'll ask John first.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
As John Scanlon had said.
All right, thank you.
As John Scanlon said Kathy Mitchell.
John Scanlon will reach out to him. Thanks, John.
Perfect.
Blueberry pie.
Settle for muffins. I don't make pies.
Four muffins.
Okay, that's easy.
We all set?
Joe has something.
I do have one last thing.
Yes, Mr. Jessamyn.
Too injured.
Second.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Pyra.
All those, all those in favor? Aye.
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 See you Saturday.
Indeed. Breaker, thirty-eight.
This goes, oh.
policing is a tough job.
How do you turn this up?
Oh, yeah, hold on, I got it.
Camera?
Yeah, do this. So click.